Anything else? I have a motion to adopt the agenda moving nine twenty-three to executive session.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie.
What?
Second by Mason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same side. Motion carried. Communication and discussion items, celebrations.
I'll do that.
Okay. Administrator reports, business challenges.
Um, I don't really have much. I started my audit.
High school, middle school principal.
Oh, I'm putting it in your packet, but we had a parent teacher conference, is all I could say. So that went fairly well. We did something a little different, I think, than last year for the middle school. Um, we had parents sign up for their homeroom class and then any available slots after that, other parents could sign in because we wanted to make sure that we at least were able to talk to a parent for a amount of time instead of standing in line for thirty minutes and wasting some of the parents' time. So we're trying to get the most out of the time when the parents were in the building. And this was brought up to by other staff members that possibly even had kids in middle school. Last year they spent, they looked down and they see a big line and so then they were never able to schedule a time with them. So we tried that. I'm gonna actually send out a survey to the parents in the next month or two just to get their feel for what, you know, feedback on that. Just tried something different. They said they've tried it in the past, but it's been a couple of years. So just kind of, that was one thing that we, yeah. But otherwise, it was very well attended. Even in the high school, I was impressed with how the parents walked through the building on Thursday. So it was good. Quarter one will conclude on Thursday, October seventeenth. We'll give students Friday to kind of finish up if they need to come in on the teacher day. And then hopefully grades will be posted Monday or Tuesday at the latest and everybody will be aware of what their quarter one grades are. Competitive cheer will go to Rapid City on the twenty-fifth for the state competition. And then volleyball, football team are getting the postseason play. Oral interpreting will have a home meet on Friday and then they have another meet. But they're getting towards the prime of their season. So they win on Saturday and have some good results there. So that's good. And issues has presented two different companies at two different groups. And I know they have at least two more places that they're gonna go to present their, I can't remember what it's on. Ethanol, I guess something with ethanol, but their proposition there. So I would like to go visit one. I know they're gonna try to do one near here. And so I might try to go see that in action when they're doing it. So far this year, I've been really focusing on building a relationship with the students and the staff. That's kind of been my quarter one focus. Trying to get in now, doing some walkthroughs and school star observations here. Formal observations in the next month. And then I went to a training last Thursday, Wednesday, Wednesday, on growth-focused evaluations. Not so much, not a scary situation, but more how can I grow and become a better teacher? You know, those, having that be the center of the evaluation process. Sometimes I think teachers are just scared of evaluations and I don't want them to feel that way. I want them to understand that we're in it together and we're growing and learning. And we just want to be better for the kids. So it was a very good training. Lots of hands-on. Seniors are applying for free college application month this month. And they're on their way there. Mrs. Stevens took a group to the manufacturing day in Huron. So that was pretty successful. They came back with honey, I think, all of them. So they had a good time there. Wednesday, the CTE, teachers will attend the CTE conference in Huron. So all of our group teachers and Mrs. Stevens will be going to that. I'm looking at installing new computers in the business office. Hopefully I'll have EMI's done on this weekend, but I got Karies updated, so we should be good there. And then the last thing is, I did, on the network side of things, I, last year, they went away from the state firewall of content filtering. And I reinstated that because I was a little nervous that was some, not everybody was being protected under Delidio because staff was not. So I wanted to make sure that staff was being monitored also. Outside of that, I think that's it. Do you have any questions or concerns with that?
Because we'll do, that was worth like if they searched suicide, it applies then.
Oh, yeah. Delidio is a great product. Like it's still, it helps with classroom management. Teachers can, they can open up websites, close websites on their own instead of going through me. So it's still like, and it, you can see all the students' screens. It does play wellness issues if we have wellness issues. If they're searching something, it can be almost anything, you know, it applies it and sends, sends an email. So, yeah, it's still a great product. It's, like I said, I was more worried about staff weren't under that umbrella. And it's, it's federal law to content filter anything that goes through. And that goes, I mean, that's BYOE, that's our computers, that's everything needs to go through a content filter. And so I was a little nervous that we weren't doing that.
Did you have any thoughts on computer, different computer training for like a junior class or senior class?
Yeah, so that's something that, as the year goes on, that we can talk about too. So a couple of the seniors have come to me during their dual credit and they're very unfamiliar with the Windows product. Because we, I'm not sure when they went to Chromebooks, but going to Chromebooks, especially if they're not getting a Windows device until they're a senior, when they start taking dual credit, might be a concern because they're not getting that experience with the Office and understanding software. Because Chromebooks, you can't install any software. They're strictly a browser device. They have extensions that you can install, but you can't install any other software on them. And so that might be something that we definitely want to look at in the future. Is should we start Windows devices in that ninth grade or tenth grade? Or, you know, ninth grade, right now, we're teaching workplace technologies. And that's really where you learn, using the Microsoft suite. And should learn that in workplace because that's very, I'm guessing most of you use Microsoft in your jobs if you are not. And, and our, the pathway isn't there right now for those kids. So that's something that might have to be addressed sooner than later. But I was, and we can teach Office three sixty-five. And I think the second semester, we will implement that in workplace technology. But it's still not the desktop version of Office. And so I think it's important for those kids as they proceed through their educational journey to have that. Yeah, that's something that might be looking for in the budget is a comparison of how much the difference is between what you paid for a Chromebook and what you pay for a Windows device. It does take a lot more management on the Windows side. I will tell you that. Chromebooks are easy to push out. So that's probably in the past, the reason it went that direction. When you lose somebody to manage those. And so that will be something that we'll have to look at though down the road.
Any other questions? Superintendent, elementary principal.
Okay, so celebrations, great cheer, first play at their home meet. That was a lot of fun. That was the first time I've ever gone to something like that. Volleyball took second place at two eighty-one. Congratulations to you guys for gold level board award. I don't know if you ever got that before, have you, gold?
Silver.
Yeah, I think it was silver.
So, thanks to you guys. And then Oral interpreting, their first little meet, this was last weekend and had a lot of students do really well. And that's kind of what I like to watch. So I'm excited for the Friday. It's a Friday?
Yeah.
Friday? They got a home meet, but it'll be fun to have them here and people get to come see them. So elementary, first graders went to the pumpkin patch, had a blast, brought back a lot of pumpkins. I'm sure that didn't take, so sitting outside, just nice. First quarter will be done this week. Again, I've been able to get in classrooms a lot and so far it's been awesome. Our staff is working really hard and we just totally care about the students and it's exciting to see. So, and we also, for elementary, had a really good turnout, parent teacher conferences. I think almost every teacher had, almost all their kids come in. So that's really good to see as well. Superintendent wise, the roof is done. We're just waiting on the skirting on the outside. We did have a couple of problems with the screws, though it's an electro, but we got that fixed right away. So that was nice to get done. I don't have an update on the track yet. They're still kind of in the works of trying to find bidding and prices on things. I applied for a grant that Terry, me and Terry talked about, and we got it. So that's exciting. And it goes up to seventy-five K matching fund. Anything below that, it just turns into a percentage. So if we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar playground we want to buy, we can get it for seventy-five thousand, which is awesome. It saves us a lot of money. So I did forward that on to Pitts. Haven't heard back from them yet. So if we don't hear back from them in a week, I'm gonna call them on Thursday just to make sure they got that. Maybe that's something we can move forward on. Again, there's seventy-five K that we can save. So that'd be awesome.
I want a happy answer to that.
Projects at the school, I think we're pretty much done. Now just kind of little stuff, but kind of our big stuff that we wanted to take care of before winter came. Have pretty much done. So, and even turning on the boilers and whatnot with the heat, we've been, so far, so good. So the plate stays that way. We're working with the state on, so we got kind of, it was kind of a plan improvement for our SPED stuff that would happen a couple of years ago. We got through everything that we needed from there and we are good on behalf of the state. So we went through everything. We had to do a little training in our last in-service and then we're good now. So everything is taken care of that. And then we did have our family-friendly walkthrough and it went awesome. We had a lot of good parent input, teacher input. They said it went really well. And then we'll actually start our team starting this Friday. For our meet for four hours. It's kind of like a meeting with the parents and stuff like that. So starting to get rolling on that. So we're hoping to see some good information on that and whatnot. So. Anything else? Good?
Thank you. There's nothing from mid-central core?
Um, there were a couple of things. There's a member going to Florida for a conference on assisted tools and devices within the school. So I think that'll be nice. So like if we had a student that had a hearing impairment or something, it's gonna come back with the newest devices and what we can do within the school to help them learn. So that would be nice with that. There is an SLP that reached out for an opening. The board had not had an opening, but because they reached out, they're going to post the position and then hire that person, but they have to post it to make sure nobody else is more qualified. But they're gonna put that person in. So that way, in the future, if we would lose one or we have some retirements, there's already one in the works that is currently running in training. So that will be nice also. They mentioned let's go learn and all of its amazing things. I was just gonna ask you guys if we use it here or?
They have not used it here. I just learned about it. So we're starting implementing that.
Nice. They talk very highly of it.
Yeah. And I did, I did a training on it, I think, over the last month, I think. So just trying to get it out there because I didn't know what it was either until I came here. So.
Nice. Awesome. I was going with you on that one. Any committee reports?
I can speak on student council. They, they have met two times since homecoming or once? Once or twice, but the, twice. The first time they brought some concerns about sore hands. The inflation of the tickets, which, which we talked about. And actually, it's been going pretty good now. So that part. But the second meeting was about having a winter formal. And so they have planned a winter formal for December thirteenth. And it's going to be seven to eight is a supper for the couples. And then from eight to ten is the dance and that's it. And so they just want to have a, they're gonna have a photo booth of, or a backdrop. I shouldn't say photo booth, but a backdrop. So each couple can, if they want to take a picture, they can take a picture. But kind of just get together with the kids in the school and don't, they don't want a grand march. They don't want parents really there. They just want to have a dance together. And so we're gonna, we're gonna try that. Admission, we're looking at doing something with free will donation to go to Angel Tree Gifts. That's kind of, I don't know. The Chicago Fund has a lot of money in it, we thought. They have about three thousand. So they didn't really want to make money on it. But we're gonna try to give back some, somehow. So that's our place.
Did you talk to them about the school board chaperoning?
Oh, okay. They maybe just want to chaperone. I do have, I do have some that have volunteered. I told them that that was the first thing. They had to find six chaperones before, before we had it. But they assured me that we would be able to find some. And we're gonna, and they said they have a DJ system. So they're gonna ask a couple of kids that have graduated to maybe come back and run the DJ. And so, I don't know. We're gonna try it. So I thought we could.
It's over ten.
I know. That's what, I asked a couple already. They're like, well, if it's over at ten, I think we can make that one work, you know? But so I thought it was kind of a neat idea just to build that student body.
I think it's something they've been trying to build. So we did a homecoming dance two years ago and it just didn't happen again the next year. And so they keep, you know, they keep trying. So it's good. They have a passion for it.
Yeah, and I asked them this year about homecoming dance. They're like, we did once. You know, and so then I did ask them, you know, is this something you would be interested in if you wanted to? And so, yeah, they came up with ideas and so I think it'll be.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone volunteer to serve the meal?
Sure.
What day is it?
The August thirteenth. She looks much friendlier than you, Terry.
It's December thirteenth. It's a Friday and I think they're gonna, I don't know, get their, it's, it's a teacher day. So they'll get their stuff either decorated or backed up or set up, you know, on Friday. They're just, I, I don't know. They're just like, let's order pizza. Let's just, I mean, like they were just, let's just have fun, you know? So, yeah, they, they weren't looking for anything formal, even though they want to call it a winter formal. So they want to dress up and look nice and have a good time together. So I guess if I can ask them if they would.
Yeah, okay. I'm sure I can.
If they open a pizza box, I can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Okay. We can just let them.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion. Motion by Ashley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same side. Motion carried. Action items, new and unfinished business. Policy review, first reading of policy JHCDE and JHCDE dash E, administration of medical cannabis to qualified students.
Okay, so I talked with Julie. We had a good conversation about this right before we had this meeting. And she just had some questions on like the designated location and different stuff like that that we talked about. In hindsight, is it wonderful to have this? No, but we have to have it in order to be accredited as a school district. So we have to put it in there. I even looked it up again. We absolutely do have to have it in there for accreditation. So this was in place, I think it was twenty twenty-one was the date. I looked it up, when it was supposed to be in. So.
In your discussion, did you guys have anything you feel like needs to be added to it or?
Did you have anything added? We didn't really have anything added. Mostly just trying to figure out the specifics of what we would do if it actually happened. She mentioned the training, which we would absolutely do. So she's gonna start looking at some trainings. The main thing was just kind of the wordage in here with where the designated location would be. And then on the backside, on page one, two, three. On page four, the actual administration plan, just some, there were like, I think it was five down. It talked about, it's not allowed for the administration of medical cannabis in federal property or location. That prohibits cannabis on its property. So the only way that we would, the only place that we would have it is, so we chose the back room in the office. So that's the only place that would be absolutely allowed. And then there was another thing in there about the patch that the kids could have. So then we talked about, okay, well, who needs to be involved in that? So everybody that would see that student would be involved and understand the needs. If they would put it on somebody else or do something like that. So involving all the, everybody that needs to be involved and needs to know about it. So that way we can keep it safe and make sure everybody's well aware of what's going on.
Yeah, I think we definitely have to have like a designated, if only can have it at such locations so that it isn't a free crawl.
Correct.
And then also like a specific place of where the documentation is held and who reviews it.
Yep. And so that will go directly to me. I just told her that. Well, any medical questions, I will ask her. But any of the paperwork or any of the questions that parents have, that I will take that personally. Even if it's a high school or middle school student, I will just take it. So that way it's done right by the book and that we're not.
Are we able to put that agenda then into this just in so that there is a clear cut? This is the designated person, just so it's not just I?
But Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't need a designated person. The only person that can do it is the designated caregiver.
Who's going to.
Someone still is gonna need to track the paperwork and. Right. But we wouldn't do it. You wouldn't do it. Nobody in the school. They have to have a caregiver and a caregiver card and like come in and do it themselves, right?
But that all needs to be kept on file.
Yeah, so we'll have, so like I will have everything on file and I'll make sure everything is legit before any of the paperwork will go through or anything we go through. So I'll have the medical card, call in, make sure it's legit, like, because we don't, we talked about someone makes a cop like fake or something like that. We don't want to run into that. So making sure everything's legit. Yep.
And my, my fear of not having it in the policy of who has ownership of it is if there's any turnover, somebody else may not take it, but the policy is still in place. So if it is in the policy that the superintendent owns ownership of this documentation, then it, that is who owns ownership of it.
Okay. Yeah, we can put that in there, absolutely. I don't think there'd be anything.
Just seen it too many times that it's a draw.
So I will make that change for the second reading. And we, and so like, for instance, on page, I think it's the second to last page. So both the nurse and administrator pass the sign up on it as well. And then provide copies of everything as well. So, but it doesn't hurt to put that in there anyway. So.
Okay. So maybe you share that ownership because the likelihood of the nurse and superintendent leaving at the same time. Right? So if you share ownership, then one of you would be here.
You okay with that nurse?
Well, I kind of feel like it needs to be one person because if he does something and I'm not sure what he did or, you know, I think one person needs to be responsible. So that one person is tracking all the paperwork. One person's tracking, if they're, because in here it even says that the medic, from the doctor has to be, I'm not sure. Administered a certain hours apart, like one person needs to be tracking that.
And just, I mean, and with one person too, you have all the paperwork, you know what's going on. And then if you have questions or whatever you can just.
It's typical that any controlled substance, there's a double signature. So I get that. But you have one ownership.
Well, I know it'd be easy too, because if we have a designated spot in the office, then superintendent's up there as well to where you can keep track and whatnot. So. Okay, good on that. So I will change that and then we'll do that for the second reading. So I'll just show that.
Second reading of policy JHCDC diabetes healthcare and insulin administration. We had this for three last month, so this is just the approval of it. Any questions on this? I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy JHCDC diabetes healthcare and insulin administration.
Madam President, any motion to approve this policy?
Motion by Terry. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Ashley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same side. Motion carries. Moving on, board gavel training. I did email you guys, does December work? December eleventh work for everybody?
So I have us down for that day. So I took her message away and we're good. So he is planning on coming back. I think we just make it that day. I think we can make it, we may have to, but at least just have it.
He usually gets really good handouts also. So. Is that mine? Okay, and then we'll have an agenda for that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Driver's education rates.
Remind me what we're at right now?
Two fifty and.
Three seventy-five?
Three twenty-five?
I was saying three twenty-five. Two fifty and three twenty-five.
So I did do some looking online. Community education in the Black Hills charges three hundred and sixty dollars for their twenty twenty-four. Gankton School District is at four hundred and fifty. Capital City Campus and Pier is at four hundred and fifty-five. Watertown, I couldn't find theirs this year with the firewall at work shutting down for twenty twenty-four. But their twenty twenty-one was three twenty. So I have to feel like they have also increased since twenty twenty-one. So I feel like we're pretty low.
Well, do you know what Huron charges?
I know that it's more than two fifty. I was thinking it was about three hundred. Just because a few people made a comment that.
Well, the only thing I don't want to raise it too high where you can go Huron and get it cheaper because then we'll lose hours. So they'll go there.
But I, I think here in this field's up. It was just when somebody called and they don't take birthday deadlines.
I just want to make sure we're comparable.
But yeah, but that's where I.
It's easy for parents to.
When somebody was looking into coming over here because it's meant to really do it over there. Maybe.
What I think the question is, is do we just want to break even? Is that our goal is just to not lose money on it or is our goal to?
I know in the past, that is where, the reason the other district kids were more is because we did not want to lose money on them. But if we lost a little bit on our own, they were fine with that because there are our own kids.
When you say breaking even, what is that accounting for? Gas and?
And instructor.
How about depreciation of the vehicle?
I don't take that. So we're, we're basically, you know, even this time, you know, then you gotta consider that you're gonna probably pay Mr. Bishop for this next year. And you never know on gas, you know, when he asks me about the same. I didn't know if you would want to go up another, say twenty-five dollars and just go two seventy-five.
What did you say?
That's what I wrote down.
I'd say it's not a money, I mean, it's not a money major. And we want kids to stay here and be able to make it a little easier on families as well in the summer. So I think just raising it.
For the kids.
Yeah, and for the kids. So I mean, I think just raising it twenty-five bucks would be fair. Yep.
I have a motion to set our driver's education rates at two seventy-five for our students and in district students and three fifty for out of district students.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie for the second.
Second.
By Herman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same side. Motion carried.
I was.
Surplus pickup topper and from Rock from Rock.
So the pickup topper is off and it's sitting down at Schumacher's. I just, I need some, I need somebody, three taxpayers to put a value on it. So if any of you guys want to. But I also want to know.
But I also wanna know, you just wanna put a price on it? I've had five people already ask about that. And so do we want to just put a price on it and say, do you wanna put this price? Or do you want to, for us to advertise, say, we will take bid? I mean, because we, it's gonna come in more than what I have to do in bids by state regulations. Or, you know, or do I just say, you know, go for a week and contact those five, and you give me your bid, what you wanna do? Advertise it on Facebook, ruin the website, and then go with whoever gives the highest bid. And I don't, I don't know what you guys want me to do.
My suggestion would be to set a reserve on it, and then if you contact those five people, and we put it on Facebook, and let them put a sealed bid in by next Friday. Open them up, high bid, here's your topper. You know, just tell them, you've got a reserve of five hundred dollars, six hundred dollars, whatever. I tried to figure out what the value of it was, but I couldn't find anything.
I didn't know.
What is it?
It's totally, it's twenty eleven.
I was too, I have no idea.
Okay. Stop by Schumacher's.
Yeah.
It's like a, we're from the topper though. It's not just a topper.
It's got a ladder rack on top, and I think it's got a couple toolboxes inside.
It looks like twenty eleven to twenty sixteen, or. I don't know, everybody.
Five hundred or so.
Here, I thought I really wouldn't have anyone that would want it, and then, yeah.
I've had people calling me about it. All we're talking about.
But I mean, the second you call the first guy and say, hey, we're gonna sell for five hundred dollars, the second guy's gonna be mad, because I would've paid you six hundred dollars.
Oh, yes.
You know, here.
It's the last one, I've got.
Turn in the deal, and then we'll open it next Friday, and you can have your topper.
Yeah.
And that makes it easier on you too.
Yeah. Okay. Then I told him, I said, the first I had to have you guys surplus it, that I'll let you know what they decide. It's kind of weird, too, of them were, had shock, that's what they do.
And do the same thing with the rock. Somebody wants the rock, call down the, the concrete company, find out what a ton of rock goes for, and do a reserve of half of that if somebody wants, wants the rock.
I'm sure you're a clerk that they have to hold.
Yeah.
Not responsible for accidents.
And put an N date on there, it has to be gone by.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to surplus with the pickup topper and rock from Rock? Motion, motion by Ashley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same side. Motion carried. I am twenty-eight resolution.
Okay, so I had a superintendent meeting this last week, and this is a very big topic now. So they weren't taking a stance on it, and now they are, and a lot of school boards have passed resolutions opposing it. I'll let you guys, you guys can decide what you wanna do. So it's a human consumption tax is what it is. So, here, I'll just read, I'll read you the, kind of the resolution that they have on here, kind of the main points. So whereas one seventy local government bodies in South Dakota have passed a resolution expressing their opposition to I am twenty-eight, or as I am twenty-eight passes, it may lead to significant cuts to the state budget, which provides the state a share to state aid for public education. Whereas South Dakota public schools receive more than seven hundred million in state aid for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which is significantly funded through the state revenue collection. And then the last part here is, South Dakota's Legislative Research Council estimated if I am twenty-eight passes, there could be a total of reduction in state revenues between a hundred and thirty-three million and six hundred and forty-six million, depending on the interpretation of the phrase human consumption. So, I mean, in there, I mean, it's a whole eight thousand pages, but, so like, they're trying to do like dog food, tobacco, anything of human consumption is what they're trying to do. And so like, again, I talked about this before, but when it first came out, Woolsey was one of the top percentages that would be affected by it. And I think it was like forty percent of our funding, and just our local government. So pool, parks, anything under that would be affected, just the whole, so.
This is what they're calling the grocery tax?
Yes.
So what do we need to do?
Um, so we can't, if you want, I mean, you can't pass a resolution opposing it. Other public schools have, what do they say, seventy other local government bodies have already passed it. Most of the, most of the schools that I've talked to are gonna talk about it, they're gonna make a resolution about it, so disopposing it.
I would assume that's your recommendation.
That would be my recommendation, yes.
I would recommend that also.
And again, I think they didn't take a stance on it, because, again, I, again, I don't like taking a stance on it, because it's, I get paid with state money. So it's hard for me to make a stance, but since they came out and made a stance, they want us to start making sure people understand what's going on and take, take a stance on it.
Any thoughts from you guys? Um, I, I would agree, I think we need, we need to keep this as a board, as long as the rest of the board are okay with it.
And the other, oh, one more thing, they do not have anything set in place to fund this if it does pass. And they said probably the next thing would be income tax.
Like the state tax?
Yeah, that would come in next, if it happened. Yeah.
Some typically always refer to getting rid of taxes, but we're just gonna get it somewhere else.
Correct, but they do not like, as of right now, they talk to the people at the state, and they have no plan of action, if it does pass, of what they're gonna do to fund that money that's getting cut away, so.
That's why they're opposing it, as there is no.
Something's set in place.
Yeah, there's no plan in place.
So put down those fifteen cuts.
Yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion to oppose I am twenty? Motion, motion by Ashley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Herman, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Um, approved contracts for Whitney Schwartz yearbook, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Kim Hanks yearbook, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Ms. A Esports, two thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars, and Shawna Peterson cold prom advisor, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Do I have a motion to approve all of those contracts? Do I have any questions? Any questions? Sorry. Okay, doing none, do I have a motion to approve the contracts as written? Motion by Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mason, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried.
Our certified contract for some of these, we have it in one spot that if they split, so like the yearbook, but we don't have it over all. And I think we need to just move it to the top so that it covers all positions.
Okay.
Exploding, I'm just going to. I put it on my network too, but.
Okay. Uh, family engagement plan.
Okay, so this doesn't need to be a policy. So for title, it's better money than we get from the state. We have to have, or, so I submit, we have to submit twenty documents, so I submitted twenty documents October first. But I wanted to just make sure this gets approved, or if you guys have anything else on it. So what this is, is just an engagement plan for families, and it pretty much just goes over all the laws that are kind of set in place of what we have to do for titles. So set it up minimum one percent for paying our title funds for family engagement. And just kind of talks about the other things that we do with assessments, different things that we can do with the kids if they fall under title. So, yeah, it's just, but you have to have a plan, the state, and so this will go on the website, along with a couple other documents that have to be on our website for parents to see. If you have any questions or anything, just let me know on it. But overall, overall, it's just pretty much what the state wants us to say and all this stuff.
Okay. Approve annual winter skid steer lease used for snow removal.
That is two thousand dollars. Okay.
Is there anybody who can get that like hourly? Like, they set it here, and it doesn't move, and they pick it up, and there's the same amount of hours they dropped it off? Or when do they drop it off? Is it here all year round?
Nope, it's just here for the basically winter months. I think if we approved this now, we would be getting it anytime. TJ would, I'd sign it and give them the check. And then it's usually through April, May.
And what are we limited to on hours? There's got to be something there.
I'm not sure, on the thing that you sent me, it doesn't really say.
Hours.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, it's a rest.
I didn't ask.
For a box.
I thought it was a tractor, didn't they use?
At one time, we have had a tractor before.
I think last year their conversation was because we have the option to buy out at the end of.
Though something, right?
That we have.
But it was wildly expensive.
So this is basically.
We did buy one.
We own, we own the job.
But Mr. Donovan has volunteered to leave his skid steer when snow comes.
Like, take it over my place.
I don't, I don't.
The others.
So basically, this is helping when we have snow, that we have two things, a way to get the, everything cleaned out.
And if we're gonna lease one, it has to be the primary, like, so if one person comes up, the first person gets in the leased one, not the one that we own. I mean, we need to figure out.
Well, so Brian's gonna do that one, and then I'm gonna do ours.
But we need to find out how many hours we could put on that thing, because I'm sure we can't put, you know, two hundred, three hundred hours on it. It's gotta be like one fifty or something.
Doesn't say anything on it.
I have never paid.
We have a room attachment, correct?
Yeah.
That room attachment needs to be run around the sidewalk, because where we replaced that curb last year is absolutely destroyed again. And it's from the corner of that bucket smashed into that cement.
So there is no, it's just a flat charge. So the, I would ask, though, because. But he can put in per hour, per day, per week, everything, but there, it's just a flat two thousand charge.
I wanna say that we've asked this question before, and Terry just, TJ said that there's not. But he just does this for this one.
There's not a future of.
Yeah, just.
I mean, it's only for snow removal, that's what we did.
I would use it all the time.
Oh, yeah. But we've used it every year with him for quite a few years, and we've never gone over. Even the year we had a lot of snow. I mean, I don't ever remember that being an issue. I mean, he's done this for us for a lot of years.
So two thousand dollars divided by sixty, that's thirty-three hours. And that seems pretty, that covers a good amount of time for a snowstorm, but yet not excessive, that we would need to use an excessive amount of time to get our micer. So I think that's okay, as long as there isn't.
A penalty for going over fifty hours or something.
So maybe we can approve it. Depending if there's no hours, this, I don't know, excessive charge.
And we haven't fast tried to get, you know, maybe some, air, local person, that can add any success by something.
He's local?
Yeah.
I'm here.
Welcome.
Yeah, now we got a local person, just need a sheet for him.
Um, do I have a motion?
I don't make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Jamie, for the second?
Second.
Second by Herman, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Uh, do I have a motion to go into executive session for South Dakota Code of Law one dash one five dash two personnel? And. Motion by Ashley, do I have a second?
No, you're good, sorry. Sure.
By Mason, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Your home looks like it's almost done.
The attachments have leathered out.
I keep looking at them, like, it looks, it looks almost done from the outside.